I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I just ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sean, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And we'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. It's limited to five minutes. If there's anyone that wants to come up, come on up and take the podium. All right, nobody. Hearing from nobody. We'll move on to our commissioner reports, if there are any. Do any commissioners have a report they'd like to make?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to report to the commission that I did listen to and a video briefing on December 20th or, excuse me, December 21st on building better airports across America. It was put on by Shanet Griffin, who is Associate Administrator for Airports. Again, information that was presented that day, this is the nonpartisan bill that went through Congress, where $15 billion will be appropriated to airports over the next five years. Some of that money, of course, will fall into airport structures that are needed, but primarily primary, non-primary, and complex towers. We kind of qualify as a non-primary. I know there's 3,300 airports that are kind of our position, but nonetheless, it is encouraging to know that there will be possibly some funds that we'll be able to use the next five years at the Lincoln County Airport at T. So that's encouraging, along with some potential money available, possibly for infrastructure improvements and for the use of making hangars and so forth. So we'll see what happens down the road once we have more information from the feds on this.
All right, thank you for that. Any other commissioners have a report?
Madam Chair, the Southeast District of Counties met in Tyndall. What was it, last, what, Thursday, Sherri, we were there? We had the gentleman down from the state that talked to the commissioners that were in attendance about how counties may be able to join the state insurance system. Because a lot of counties have, like we are, we have not that many people covered, our costs are extremely high, and our coverage is not the greatest for our employees. So what the state is doing is evaluating the ability for counties across the state to join with them as a much larger group to be able to get, A, less cost to the participants, to the employees, less cost to counties, and greater coverage. And it was very interesting, all the counties that were there, the Southeast District, as you know, is made up of six counties, Union, Yankton, Clay, Minnehaha, Lincoln, Turner County, and Bonhomme. And all of the commissioners that were in attendance on that one were very interested in that. So that's something the county association is going to pursue to see whether that could actually happen, because it has great potential for our employees, but also for our county. So that was very interesting. And there were other things that we discussed amongst commissioners on how we spend our money for our investments that we got from the COVID funds. And it also covered our agenda for the state on what we were going to do as far as getting extra money and following some initiatives that are being pursued by some of our legislators to give the counties extra money through a sales tax, et cetera. Very informative. I would encourage our commissioners to attend, because it was very good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on with our regular business. We've got Alan Welsh here from Lincoln County Development. Good morning.
I'm Alan Welsh. I'm just going to give a quick presentation regarding the Justice Center. I've lived in Lincoln County for 21 years. I'm not a contractor, I'm not a salesperson. I'm just putting the information out here, and hopefully if there's some way that we can work together with the county, and that's a good option for the county and for us, then, you know, I'd love to make it happen. I have a PowerPoint, I'm going to show it over here. I hope I'm not in anybody's way of seeing it. I'm just going to read off my notes, just to kind of go through this and make sure I cover everything. So like I said, I'm not a salesman, and I hope this is just a discussion to answer any questions and work together to meet the needs of Lincoln County. That's our goal. And then what's in this for us? We hope to profit like any business, but we want to build a new development that will benefit Canton and Lincoln County. This development would create, you know, good jobs and generate tax revenue for the city and county. It's a short drive to Sioux Falls, but even better if we could build this development and residents may not need to drive to Sioux Falls. So just some information from what I've looked at, Lincoln County's courtroom demands are similar to Rapid City and growing. And Rapid City currently operates 12 courtrooms. My goal today is to provide the county with options and hope we can work together to meet your needs. And here are a few of those, just kind of throw some options out as we go through this. And we can always go back, and I want to go through, hopefully the PowerPoint will answer any questions. If not, you can just ask them, and we can go back and try to answer any questions. We'd like to develop the entire 240 acres with Lincoln County Justice Center, near the center resting on 30 acres, a planned community with easy access and, you know, a beautiful area that includes a park and a pond, as well as residential, commercial, and industrial zoning. That's just another front view of the Justice Center, the way it's planned right now. And just looking at potential deliveries or options for the county, we could just build the shell with the county finishing the project. We could build an entire building with the interior completed. Or we could just sell the land, or sell the land with the finished lot, everything there, and leased. And then just to touch on the gray shell option, just providing the gray shell may be a good option with the items listed here. If the county has grant or infrastructure money, you know, this may be a good option, too. If we build the shell with these things included, the lease payment would be much smaller in the county departments, and the UGS could customize with more say in the final product. The negative side of that, obviously, is they would be paying rent while also finishing the project. Empire Construction out of Sioux Falls would likely be our builder. They are capable of a project of this magnitude, can stay within budget, on time, and they have the relationships to ensure we get the necessary materials to complete the project, which is definitely a difficult thing right now. And you have Luke here with me, Luke is the owner of Empire Construction. That's an interior design. The architects from Elevatus have worked closely with every interested party to meet the needs of every department represented. So this is, this design is with a lot of input from judges in different departments that would reside in the Justice Center to create the exact structure that meets your needs while considering costs. Further, they aren't just presenting a plan. The main reason that I liked and went with Elevatus was they'll see the project through to completion, working with us, working with the builder and anyone else involved, such as a project manager, if the county chose to appoint or hire one. Mike and Doug with Elevatus are here, they're sitting in the back row here. And that's just a picture of it with the jail. At one time, there was a jail to just show the Justice Center's construction and plan, so a jail could easily be added in the future. The 30 acres is plenty large enough to provide for the entire structure and parking. Construction costs have skyrocketed. This is a pretty defeating slide when you look at the numbers. They continue to increase. The prices of materials are not going down. Materials are hard to get, and prices are only guaranteed for a short period of time. Any agreeable contract would need to include a CPI. Every year, the project costs $3 million more at the rate it's increasing right now, at the 1 percent, 1 percent increase a month. And that's not a number that we have any control over. And this is kind of an aerial design of the entire development. As you can see, there's a pond, there's a park with some residential, some commercial. At the very, you're looking at this north is at the top, as with any map. Highway 18 is running there across the top, and Highway 11 runs from, on the north and the south, on the left side of the screen there. So anyway, growth, commerce, and housing, that also brings labor for any businesses that choose to make Canton home. I know builders already that I've talked to that if there's lots available, would want to buy lots to build. Like we said, time is of the essence, is our biggest concern, is time. Due to how quickly the cost of materials are increasing, it's extremely difficult to set pricing and calculate the increase over such a large project. That will take this much time. Our preference is to work together and be totally transparent with our costs, markup and profit. If the county appointed or hired a project manager, we could share information and work together, or simply share the information with the county. We're going into this whole project as an open book, like we said. We'd like it to be somewhat of a joint operation. We're not trying to sell something. It's kind of a difficult and a large project. We'd much rather prefer to just work together. Working together, step by step, with total transparency, determining the best options as we go. We could build the shell. You'd have more say in the project decisions and the finish, as I covered that, and the rent would be less, but again, finishing it would be the expense on the county. Purchase land and sell bonds to pay for the project, lease, or lease with the option to purchase. Options, you know, we could do option renew every five years. And then there's a TIF option, which I put in here. I don't pretend to know a whole lot about TIF, but I believe the county has someone that knows about TIF. So I just threw some information up there on, you know, kind of what I know, but I certainly don't know much about it, if it's an option that the county could consider. We do everything we could to help, if this is an option, elected to support the cost of the project. The timeframe of the entire development would obviously matter. We'd like to develop and sell lots, you know, within the year or two years. That's just kind of another aerial view of the entire development. Now I'll get into some numbers here. This is as of November 24th, this was the numbers, the exact breakdown of the soft and hard and soft costs for the Lincoln Justice Center are available. If we do a complete build to completion, we would need some soft costs in infrastructure. Obviously, we'd want the county to be invested as we are. And then these next numbers I show are just the jail. There's no talk that I've heard that the jail is something that's being considered right now. I just threw it up there because those costs were completed. And then the next slide would be the joint, if you did a combination of the Justice Center and the jail. And then here's putting some numbers to it, and I have no idea what the interest would be. I don't know how many years the county would look at, or a down payment. Obviously, all that changes this, so these were just examples I gave. The total cost of the Justice Center at $35 million, I did a 6% for 30 years, with 20% down, and the payment was $167, 74 a month with no down payment. It goes to 209. You can see it changed if you do 20 years. And I'm not exactly sure where those numbers would come to rest, but those were just the examples that I gave, and you could tweak any one of those numbers to change it. So this slide, at a cost increase of $260,000 a month, the price of this project increases more each month than the monthly payment. So the only way it doesn't make sense to do this as soon as possible is if you're not going to do it at all. And I'm not up here pushing one way or the other. I'm just trying to give the information. I've been looking at this. We've been looking at it for quite a while and going through numbers. With the options I proposed, from just buying the land to a turnkey facility, and knowing that doing nothing costs $2 to $3 million a year, this is a project that needs to get started. I'm offering you the option of calling the shots and how the best move forward. I believe we have mutual interests that benefit the residents of Lincoln County. And we just need to start if this is something that you're going to do. We can get into questions. The rest of these are just some aerial views, so I'll kind of just leave it at that. Obviously, these are just concepts at this time. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer anything. Otherwise, I can let this sink in. I can give a copy of the PowerPoint, if you guys would like a copy of the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Alan. Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Welsh?
I'd like a copy of the PowerPoint. And what was your total cost, again, of the courthouse and the Justice Center?
Was $35. That's with the hard costs and the soft costs, $35 million.
Alan, how many courtrooms is in the current concept plan?
I believe it was 12. Was it eight? Eight. Okay, eight, sorry. And you wouldn't, it depends on the build-out if you wanted to utilize all eight right away or not.
Sure, and then there is room for expansion?
Yeah.
There will be.
Architect can speak to that, but from the design, I, I mean, you can talk. I'll go back to the interior design.
Thank you.
The plan is a linear plan, a straight corridor that-
You want to come up to the mic, please?
The plan is a linear plan. It's a straight corridor that accesses all the courtrooms. And the expansion could be right straight out the end. There's still, 30 acres is a pretty good-sized chunk of ground, and we could easily double the capacity of courtrooms by adding, by going out.
One of these are courtrooms?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, each one of the-
But there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's eight courtrooms going across.
One is a different kind of courtroom for admissions into the system, and then three, two in custody courtrooms for detainees. There are some cells-
Sir, I don't think there's some people that can hear you out in the crowd. You need to speak in the microphone.
Okay.
Because I think we're straining, and these are some pretty important numbers.
Okay. There are eight courtrooms. The design allows for expansion to probably double the capacity, depending upon the configuration and how much land really comes with the deal. The building is designed with a Sally Port for transportation of prisoners from Minnehaha here. It also has a male and female holding room for arraignments. There's an arraignment courtroom, the first courtroom on the end is an arraignment courtroom. There are also two-person cells with a day room and an outdoor rec, so that if there are detainees that need to stay there, the trial was more than a day, that there's a qualified space to be able to do that and not have to transport them back to Minnehaha. And then judge's offices, parking, and then the, from state's attorney down to the other offices in the building.
So the state's attorney's office and the sheriff's office are both in this concept plan?
Sheriff's office is not. There's a sheriff's detention office here, but the sheriff's office is not, it's not a sheriff's department. It's enough detention for the security of the building and the prisoners that would be there, and for the security operations, but it's not the sheriff's office, it isn't intended to be.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Judge Halman, have you had an opportunity to look at this and to see where those courtrooms are of sufficient size and nature?
I have.
Thank you. Adam, I got one other further question before Commissioner Aaron's has it. Do you know whether we, the sewer capacity of Canton would have to be upgraded if we were to put this here?
Yeah. I actually had that on one of the slides I went through. I only know from speaking with the auditor that that was a concern, so I would guess from what I was told from her that, and maybe she could speak to it better than me, that that would have to be-
Well, we heard from, we heard from the mayor here a couple weeks ago about their limited capacity and how they needed to upgrade. And if we were to put that there, that's going to add a tremendous amount of usage. And when your development is out there, it will as well, so.
Yeah, and that is in the PowerPoint. I mean, I just mentioned, I'm sorry, I don't know, you know, how much or what that entails, but I would think that's definitely a consideration that that would have to be upgraded.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Just to give some idea to the size, I mean, looking at it, it's hard to sell. I think this is just under 80,000 square feet. And looking at the corridors, the hallways, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're 14 feet wide, to just kind of give you, as you look at the design, to give you an idea of the size of it. I thank everybody. Thanks for your time.
Alan, I've got a question for you, or for the architecture team. So in the PowerPoint slide, it gave some estimated cost for the jail. I think that's $29 million. How many people would that hold? How many prisoners does that hold?
For the future expansion of the jail?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we want to get the PowerPoint back up, or did you unplug?
Well, I did unplug it.
I don't know if it was a technical glitch, or?
No, I haven't unplugged it.
Okay.
The future expansion for the jail, the $29 million, is 200, I think we programmed out 220 potential bids. And that's a real flexible number, and that number can go up or down based upon what your needs really are whenever that happens.
Yeah, of course. I'm not trying to hold you to it at this moment.
Yeah, it's 200 bids.
I think the public sees the number. They want to know the population size that could be held. The reason I bring it up is Brookings County recently did a jail expansion for, I better be careful here and not say the dollar amount, but came in rather economical, and it was for 85 people. Our average daily population right now is hovering just below that. So, and recently, I had Larry Nelson, just yesterday, as a matter of fact, just sent me the budget for what it costs to run the Brookings jail. And it just comes in under what we're currently paying Minnehaha County right now. So there's possibly some fertile ground there to look at. It's going to be a discussion point for our next courthouse improvement committee. Hopefully, you can attend that. I would say this, Madam Chair, recently, myself, Commissioner Schmidt, our auditor, Tom Grimmond, and Larry Nelson met. We've started digging into the financing piece of this. And at our next courthouse improvement committee meeting, Tom Grimmond will be presenting on the issue of what it would take to finance a potential courthouse, potential jail expansion. He's going to present a number of courses of action at that next meeting for financing. You know, so we're looking forward to that. Citizens Committee is also, you know, a number of members on the committee have expressed an interest in wanting to explore what the financing would look like for a jail. Of course, this time around, there's got to be more transparency, more discussion about it, and it's got to be citizen-driven. So, and it takes time to build coalitions, put people together to do these things.
Got it.
I think certainly there's an interest in wanting to do this if we could create a cost containment scenario where the construction of the jail and the courthouse comes in less than what the potential cost of construction of the jail was last time. So basically, you can get a twofer, jail and courthouse, for less than what the jail construction would have been, and it meets our needs, and additionally, it doesn't result in the as large of a tax increase as what just the construction of the jail would have been. Just so people know, behind the scenes right now, that's the kind of number crunching that's going on. We're trying to do the analysis. It takes time to do course of action analysis. That's what we're trying to figure out here. So thank you for putting these numbers together. That kind of gives us a touchstone to guide off of, if you will.
Yeah, the thing that's probably most important about these numbers is that they're current numbers. And as Alan's presentation illustrated, the cost of this thing's going to go up. Just the courts building will go up 10 to 12% this year. So the longer it goes, every month is a quarter million dollars of cost increase for something like this, so.
Well, I think we're very cognizant of that, and it's because of that reason, we've also, we have a subcommittee from the courthouse improvement committee that's going to trek up to Brookings County to take a look at their jail and to sit down with their officials to start talking about their numbers as well.
Yeah, as you know, we have done, we've done quite a number of jails, and we put only, put the 200-bed unit in this because it was what you talked about before. But we've got a current prototype that's 120 beds that would work just as well, and it's significantly less.
Thank you.
And I think those would be numbers we'd be interested in taking a look at.
It will be relatively easy. We've done enough work on this now to know what the metrics are for all the pieces of the building. And it would be relatively easy, based upon your decisions, as to the size that this needs to be, to make adjustments pretty quickly to the plan and to the design.
Commissioner Aaron's, when this kind of dovetails into item 13 on our agenda, what's the timeline for meeting with the advisory committee and Mr. Grimmond?
In the next two weeks. We're trying to put schedules together now. Our goal was to meet after the holidays, towards the next two weeks. Before the holidays, it's very busy, so we'll probably be meeting within the next two weeks. The schedule is permitted.
So we could put Mr. Grimmond on, if we put him on our last meeting in January, would that work?
You could put him on whenever you want, Madam Chair. I'm just saying, in terms of the courthouse improvement committee, we're going to try to meet within the next two weeks.
And we want to flush all those numbers out, get all those scenarios out there in front of the public, and start vetting the different financing options. I do not anticipate that at the end of this month, there will be a coalition of support ready to pull the trigger on a courthouse or a jail. I anticipate a, and the members of the courthouse improvement committee have also told me this, that we anticipate this process taking somewhere around the next six months. There's two important trigger points that the committee is very interested in being able to determine financing. Number one, I'm looking right at Representative Otten right now. One of those trigger points is going to be whether the legislature passes the proposed sales tax support for construction of certain county infrastructure. We won't know whether those bills pass until later on in, you know, March, probably, at the- at the earliest is my assessment. And then also another trigger point for cost, a course of action analysis on the financing is of course what Congress does with the ARP money. Because if we're able to use $11 million of county ARP money, then that reduces, you know, our financing to the tune of $11 million. Now that, who knows when Congress will act? And we have to make our plans regardless of that. But those are two definite trigger points that we're interested in knowing over the course of the next few months. Now, are we waiting for the legislature and waiting for Congress? No. But those were two points of interest that the citizen committee was very interested in knowing in terms of determining financing options. And we'll have other financing options developed regardless of what the legislature or Congress does.
So I guess what I'm going to ask is that Mr. Grimmond come into the next meeting and fill in the board members on the financing options. I had asked at least two months ago for the courthouse committee to meet and figure out what their recommendations were to pay for this thing and, and bring us that. And it was determined at that time that that was a commission decision to be made. So I think the commission needs to be filled in on the finance options. And I cannot see extending this out much in the future, especially if it's costing us an additional $260,000 at a minimum every month to move this thing forward. I don't think that's financially, fiscally responsible. And so I would ask Mr. Grimmond come in and fill us in at the next meeting on January 4th, if he's available. Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions for either the elevatus team or Mr. Welsh?
I'd like to thank Adam for preparing this, working with us. This is kind of a work in progress, and if you have a lot of unknowns, so do we.
I appreciate it. I'm happy to work with you guys. If you come up with a better idea, let me know. I mean, we're open to working with you.
Well, Adam, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a second reading and public hearing.
This is the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Lot 1, Dakota Steel Edition, East half of the northeast quarter, Section 31 Township 97 North, Wright 49 West, from the A1 Agricultural District to the I1 Light Industrial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Location, 29029 477th Avenue.
Thank you. Good morning. Toby Grounder, City of Miami Planning. The applicant in order.
For this application is Grand Valley Properties LLC. The location of this parcel is approximately seven and a half miles northeast of the city of Beersford. Parcel size is approximately 6.77 acres. The purpose for this application is the applicant, Dakota Steel, which is, was shown on the screen in the purple area, is proposing to expand their business to the adjoining parcel to the south, which is being petitioned to change the zoning. Applicant identified through a concept plan that they intend to construct a 25,000-square-foot building, which will be utilized for warehousing for their business. This would be the approximate location. Again, this would be to the north. This would be the approximate location of the proposed building. Access to this parcel would be obtained through an existing access to the township road right there. Findings in the staff report is that the application is consistent with the adjacent zoning to the north. However, the application is not consistent with the Lincoln County Conference of Plan, which identifies this as future agricultural area. The planning commission did conduct a public hearing and did recommend, they did an affirmative motion, but the recommendation was zero to six failed for recommendation for approval. So essentially, they recommend not approval of this application. Now with that, we happen to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Toby, what did staff recommend?
Staff recommended essentially that you got to split, you got adjacent zoning, which is not a spot zone. However, the conference of plan clearly identifies that this is not consistent. So if you're going off the conference of plan, staff would recommend denial.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? You want to come up, sir, and state your name and address and explain the request?
My name is Leonard Decker. I'm at 29007 477th Avenue, Canton. And I don't know if you guys want a copy of this?
Sure, if you want to hand those out. Good morning.
Good morning, Leonard. Thank you.
I guess I'll go over it and it should explain what Dakota Steel is about and when it originated, and what the plans are for the future.
Sure. Sir, can you pull the microphone up to you a little bit since we're streaming?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dakota Steel is a family-owned business since 1991. Dakota Steel is a manufacturing plant with 90% of our product being used for agriculture, used for building, buildings and roofing. We are in need of our, of an expansion building of storage and maintenance so that we can take care of our own maintenance. This will help reduce traffic for our neighbors and employees, which will then benefit our production so that we can be more efficient and improve relationship with the neighbors. As of now, we are landlocked for expansion. Dakota Steel has 38 employees, most of whom are local. We are up to OSHA standards. The facility has a very clean environment, and the manufacturing process does not work with any hazardous materials. Ownership strongly believes in having a strong Christian environment and Christian values. Dakota Steel is currently working with local neighbors on keeping lights and traffic to a minimum. We want to eliminate any opposition and concerns. We are not to, we are looking to improve the neighborhood with possibly installing fences and replanting trees and shrubs. We do not have a Plan B and do not want to have to move to another county or location. It would not be in our best interest to do so. And we do appreciate and respect our neighbors in our county. I would be very thankful if the committee would get this approved. And then I got the owners listed on the bottom. And it, it's a family operation. I've been in the county for 32 years. And I guess if there's any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Decker?
Yeah, Mr. Decker, thank you for being here this morning and providing us with this synopsis you gave us. A question I have for you is, in your first paragraph here, you said that construction of the maintenance shed will help reduce traffic for your neighbors and employees. Could you explain to us how that will do that?
Well, right now, there's a lot of going back and forth, going to a town or a maintenance shop to fix and repair equipment. So you got to take it there, go follow and pick the driver up, or vice versa on the way back. So everything will be done on-site, so it should reduce the traffic.
Does most of your maintenance happen off-site right now?
Not all of it, but a lot of it.
The second question I have is about the lighting out there. Has anybody ever expressed to you concern about the lighting that you've got out there? Have any of the neighbors come to you and ever said, hey, we need to have that positional lighting changed out there?
Well, they didn't personally come to me, but they, they brought it to the, to the board here as concern.
Did you fix that after that concern arose, or not?
I did shut the lights off to the west. That, there's a, Solums are one mile west of there, and it does reflect into their house. So I shut them off for now. And I have a plan to, there's, you can get factory shields to put on. I have a plan to do that. And then if that's not efficient, I'm going to work with the neighbors. We'll put, we're going to put dimmer switches on. And if it's still a concern, we'll have to shut them off.
Did, and remind me, obviously, I did sit on the commission back in 1991 when this process started. But was it the intent at the time in order to be able to get the process or to get the location permitted? Is, did you tell the commission at that time that there would be no further expansion, or not?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Decker, do you, does your company, do they work 10-hour days, 8-hour days? Are you open five days a week, six days a week, four days a week?
We're open five days a week, and from 7:00 to 5:00, 7:00 to 6:00 sometimes.
Leonard, I have been at your place, and I would say that your facilities are probably the cleanest I've ever seen and the most modern I've ever seen. It was quite educational to know how you bend the steel and all the other stuff. One of the concerns that you have heard and the planning commission heard was the traffic on the roads. And I'm not expert, and I've only been on your place maybe half a dozen times. Have you had, or do you notice any deterioration of the road because of your trucks that go in and out? That you've had to talk to your township board about, or anything like that? Or dust control, or anything of that nature?
I have not talked to the county about the road. There's a one-mile gravel, which is a, is a, it's a well-improved gravel. It's one mile, whoops, one mile to the west and two miles to the east before you hit Blacktop. Or to the east, it's Highway 11. To the west, it's the county road 125. And I do not see the roads being torn up or deteriorating. They're well-maintained. But I might work with the, with the highway department to see if we can maintain that road ourselves, the three-mile stretch, if that's an option.
I was just thinking, if, if dust got to be an issue, you know, dust control can, mag chloride can be put on and it would eliminate virtually all the dust problems that could arise from stuff like that.
They, they do put oil on where there's residential.
Okay. Another thing, Mr. Decker, you, you've talked to your neighbors and have tried to come up with a mediation plan that would accommodate or address their concerns?
I have talked to some of them, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that was mainly their concerns, is the lights and the traffic. And then the traffic coming in from the east with their headlights, that's disturbing to the neighbors. That's why I'm talking about putting up fencing and, and trees and shrubs.
Were they agreeable with that kind of, if you were to do that? Were they agreeable to accept that accommodation?
Well, they, they decided it would really help if we could work with them and get that done. So overall, I'm not sure.
Okay. You had mentioned about lights, and you put dimmer switches on and/or turn it off?
Yeah.
What would happen, Leonard, if you did turn it off? I mean, are you concerned about vandalism or about thefts, or what hardship would that place upon you if you just turned the lights off?
Well, it would just be on the west wall.
Under one side?
West side, and that's where the employees park. So it's concern, it's a concern as far as a hazardous area when it's dark. When it's too dark, that's about the only reason that I would like to see them, see some light there.
So your employees, do they come at, like in the morning and leave at night, right?
Yeah.
So if you were to have the lights on when they got there in the morning, or if you had the lights on when they leave at night, and the rest of the time you could turn them off, right?
Well, I could, but I don't know if that's the time when the, when, when the neighbors want to see the lights on or off. I don't know that.
Okay, all right. And your closest neighbor is how close? One mile away?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no further questions right now.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions for Mr. Decker? If not, thank you. You can have a seat. And I will call up anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this rezone request. If, if there is no one, then I will ask for anybody who would like to come up and speak in opposition to the rezone request. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Heidi Solom, and I live at the, location of 290th Street and 476, which is directly one mile to the west of the applicant's business. My family and I are fourth-generation landowners. We have lived in two valls and returned to the farm to enjoy peace and quiet. We did not anticipate or expect the high volume of semi-traffic that we have experienced. Yeah, we are concerned, obviously, about proposed expansion of this. We know and appreciate normal farming operations and the seasonal traffic. We did not anticipate that we would be having semi-traffic going by our home. And at that corner, they come from the east. A lot of the traffic would come to the west, to the hard-service road, which is 476, and, and go north or south and to gain access to the interstate. So that's why we're experiencing so much traffic there with the headlights, the jake braking from the brakes on the semis, the noise. We have actually experienced some of this semi-traffic even at 10:30 at night. So whether it's maintenance of these equipment or, or, I'm not sure. But it's been not just during business hours during the day, it has been at night. So like I said, the jake braking, the noise, the headlights, the heavy traffic is a concern. These are township roads that are not designed for that kind of traffic. I do acknowledge that the applicant has temporarily in the last month reduced the lighting, and I am grateful for that. But he has stated that he intends to turn them back on and have dimmer switches and, and shields. So I'm not sure how that will, will continue. Like I said, the township roads are not designed for this type of traffic. With the high volume of, or the high number of employees, I would think that there would be a concern for their safety as well, for access to. I would think that there would be a concern for their safety as well for access to emergency services out in a rural area like that. I would strongly request that the area would remain agriculture and that there would be no further commercial expansion. I don't wanna see this become an industrial zone. It could be once rezoned in the future, anything could go in there, and I don't wanna see that. I want it to remain as agricultural land, as it has been and should be in this place. So, thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Come on up, please state your name and address.
I'm Norm Solem. That's my wife Bonnie. And we live at 29014-476 Avenue, which is approximately a mile straight west of Dakota Steel. And I farm along that road that goes in front of Dakota Steel, that's 290th Street. So I probably would say I use that road probably about as much as anybody. I can't talk about acreage owners because they probably drive it more than I do. But where farm equipment is concerned, I probably use it as much as anybody. I basically just have two concerns. And they tie together. One is the future, because none of us know the future. And the other is the traffic. All that other stuff has been covered. Well, Leonard's talked about the lights and he's working on it, so we'll just have to see how it goes. So my two concerns are the future, because we don't know what's gonna happen 20 years down the road. The rezoning is the whole thing. That's what we're here about. Businesses change. As Sioux Falls grows towards Canton, we've seen a lot of changes happen between here and Harrisburg and T. And sometimes people didn't plan on something moving into an area that does. And 20 years from now, we don't know if Dakota Steel's gonna stay the same as it is or it's gonna be completely different. And that ties into the traffic. We don't know what's gonna happen. There might be less, but there might be a whole lot more. And being in the middle of an ag area, you know, 13 miles from Canton, 13 miles from Biersford, we're about as centered in an ag area as you can be. I don't know, I'm real concerned if it's rezoned. The traffic might decrease, but it might increase because the business might change. 20 years from now, it might not be recognizable as what we see today. And Mr. Schmidt's correct, it is extremely clean. His trucks are quiet. It's all the independent guys that have the jake brakes and whatnot that he has no control over. You know, they deliver raw materials and then independent guys pick up finished product. And he can't control that. But that, so I guess that's about all I have to say. We don't know the future, and that concerns me. If this is rezoned, it might develop into something totally different than what he's planning today. And then the traffic might increase considerably, which is in the middle of an ag area. The roads really aren't designed for that, so. I guess that's all I got. If you've got any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? If not, thank you.
Okay.
Norm, just before you go down, excuse me.
Yeah.
That is a $64 question. I think they used to have that statement out there.
All this stuff I've seen that happens up by Harrisburg, all of a sudden the farm field turns into a boom. And nobody knew it was coming and, you know.
Lincoln County is a growth area. I mean, you got people continually wanting to move into the country.
Absolutely.
Building sites are extremely high-priced.
And acreages.
Acreages are high-priced.
And I expect more acreages to pop up around me. And these guys that come in the future might be concerned about industry too.
Oil roads are premium, you know, they're an invitation. So I think commissioners always do, are concerned about where that future is gonna be. But there's no crystal ball. But if you look at the growth patterns of the last 10 years and project the next 10 years, you might not recognize where you live right today.
And that's why we gotta be really cautious.
So, but anyway, I appreciate your concerns.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anthony James Ventura, 47763, 292nd Street. You have to look at the past of this property to understand the future. In 2003, highway department observed a steel fabrication was happening in the structure on this property. On April 16, 2007, revocation hearing on this property. April 20, 2009, a rezon was denied. In 2009, planning and zoning analysis stated that allowing expansion or building of new structures on this property would result in adverse effects upon neighboring residences. September 9, 2010, it stated upon a permit that all setbacks were met, were setbacks met from roads, were setbacks made from parking lots and generational farms. 1501A states that a parking lot should maintain a setback of 15 feet from a property line. August 25, 2011, 04.cup.099 stipulated no new expansions of a building to be allowed. No parking of vehicles with signage addressed in 1601A, this is a safety and traffic issue. 1503B states no loading space shall be permitted to extend it to any public right-of-way. On April 20, 2009, staff agenda even stated that with industrial application, shall be in compliance with Lincoln County ordinances. It does not stipulate old or new ordinances. These complaints have been lodged to the highway department but never addressed or brought to the planning and zoning. How are these issues ever gonna get fixed? Why are these departments not working together and make sure the citizens' concerns or complaints are addressed? Also, there's a 20-ton weight limit on Lincoln County Bridge, which is on the township road. Who's responsible for this bridge? A large semi-truck, it weighs approximately 20 tons, the order is 40 tons. The equivalent of 20,000 to 30,000 cars passing on this road. Shouldn't infrastructure be in place or even considering rezon to be industrial? The other frustrating thing I found is a problem in 20.03A. It states the Lincoln County auditor shall provide a copy of published legal rezon to the budding counties 10 days before the hearing. Is this being done? And I believe it is not. So here's the question. Is Lincoln County doing things right? The answer is no. Nobody wins in this situation. The zoning change is not fair to either side because we do not have the infrastructure that was promised years ago, or plans to fix the issues that we have brought up today. Unfortunately, I ask you to vote no on this rezon. It does not belong around this area. It is seven miles from Biersford. And there's nothing else that I can find in this industrial zone close to this pothole zoning piece allowed years ago in the middle of an agricultural district where the ag citizens are not being protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'd consider a motion.
Got a question for you, Mr. Decker. Where do the trucks turn in from? Do they turn off of the oil road? Or do they go onto the gravel road in order to access your property?
They turn off oil and a paved road and then onto a gravel to exit the site.
Is there, you know, you heard one of the complaints today was semi-trucks going up and down that stretching gravel road there? Is there any way possible the trucks can turn around on your property so they can exit and enter on the oil or not? Or would that completely?
They can go either to the east or to the west to get onto a oil road, which in the last month or two, we're routing a lot of trucks to the east onto Highway 11. Especially our own trucks. Like I said, I wanna keep the neighbors happy. And I'll do my best to keep it that way.
Mr. Decker, the comment was made about independents and jake braking. Any way that you can tell these clowns not to do that? Because that is annoying. That is very annoying when they back off on those things, that's a racket. So, and I know they're independents, but surely they are working indirectly for you. Can that is something that you can prevent them, you think?
I have talked to the highway department, I believe it's Terry.
Yeah.
And about putting up some signs for no engine brakes or no jake brakes. And we are working on getting that done. Now, also, there's nobody out there to enforce it. So it'd just be, hopefully, they would respect it and not use them. But yeah, there's a chance, a good chance we'll put up some signs.
And if you made that pretty clear to them. Another thing, you have 1991 when you put this thing up. And, you know, Norm talked about the future. Are you, in your estimation, are you ever expected to wanna expand your present site for more? Are you looking at buying more land and expanding? Or are you going to put a warehouse up to, you said, stores and maintenance stuff? Is that kinda the total footprint that you see for?
What I see, this will complete the operation. If I put that building up for maintenance, I don't see any expansion. We do not need any more expansion for the operation. It fulfills our needs. And it's big enough for the community to provide the product that we're producing. I do not see that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments? If not, just waiting on a motion.
Well, I'd like to discuss amongst the commissioners what they see here, just for discussion rather than make a motion right away. But we got a situation where we got somebody here since 1991 that's running an operation. And we've got the concerns of the citizens that say that, you know, that the traffic is a nuisance and lighting is a nuisance and that. But on the other hand, if we're able to adjust and take care of the lighting, if we're trying to put up a fence, take care of the trees, if we're trying to cut down on the jake braking, and we don't look for any future expansion beyond the norm footprint, we've actually got a better situation as a result of that for the neighbors because we've addressed the problems that are currently existing. Because if I understand this right, Mr. Decker, if you don't put this up, it's business as usual. So you still have the trucks coming in, you still have the lighting going on, you still have the commerce going on, that you're gonna continue the business that you have. So indirectly, you're improving the problems that currently exist. Now, am I wrong on this, commissioners?
I don't know, Commissioner Schmidt, that's the problem. I still don't have a handle on how a maintenance shed decreases traffic. You know, I guess I just haven't heard a sufficient answer to that. I think your analysis is right about the fact that if we turn it down today, it's business as usual. There will be no improvement, it'll be the status quo. All the complaints we've heard from everybody here today will still continue into the future. So we haven't fixed that, and we haven't made life better for everyone. Haven't made life better for the existence of Mr. Decker's business. And we haven't made life better for the existence of the residents that live out there. And government ought to work, at least in my estimation, to try to make life better for people, not to maintain the status quo. And the question is here today, can we thread the needle? Is it possible to allow Mr. Decker to build this building and to improve the quality of life for the citizens around the building? That's the discussion I'd like to hear. I see some people shaking their heads with regard to whether or not approval equates into, bless you, equates into improvement. Back in 1991, the commission did a spot zone. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Some guy offered a cheap piece of land, sold it to these people. And, you know, Mr. Decker was the beneficiary of that. And I do think Mr. Decker has been a conscientious business owner out there and has attempted as much as he can to take into consideration the feelings of the neighbors. So, Mr. Decker, I wanna thank you for that. And by all accords from everything I've heard, you hire 38 people. Those are 38 good-paying jobs that we have today in Lincoln County, thanks to you. So thank you. The question is, back in 1991, there probably should have been more control features or functions on the rezon at that time. You know, they probably should have put some strings attached to it. The question is, can we do that today? And I think we probably can. But I don't have all the answers, but we do need to, the rezon has to prohibit future expansion, number one. The rezon has to get a handle on this lighting control issue. We need, the vehicles should not be entering or departing onto that gravel. That's a gravel road right there, right? Am I correct? That 474th going north and south? Am I wrong? Are those both oil roads or not?
No, they're gravel.
They're gravel. And 144th is an oil road, right? The highway?
No, it's a gravel county road.
Okay, they're both gravel. The thing is, can we reduce entry and departure onto just one of those roads? I don't know. Can you do that or not, Mr. Decker?
Well, there's no traffic on the north and south road. That's a township road. And the east and west road is where the traffic is. And I believe that's a county road.
It is.
It's one road with two access points.
Right, so I'm hearing Ms. Solem, and she says she's worried about the traffic on the road. What I'm wondering is, can we eliminate traffic on the township road and just confine the traffic to the one road? Is that possible or not?
That's the way it is right now. The traffic is east and west.
Okay, so there is no departure onto the township road at all from your business?
There is to the south and to the north, but.
Can we eliminate that or not? Can we just create a situation where there's an entry and departure onto one road?
Well, it is eliminated right now. We are not using the north and south.
Most of that will be on that county road. Terry, what's the condition of that county road?
It's in fairly good shape. We don't have any issues out there, really. So, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I've driven on it, it's a good road.
Yeah, it's in decent shape. You know, I mean, the only time you have issues is during the spring thaw. There may be some.
Or load limits and stuff like that.
Yeah, and then typically in the spring with load Yeah, yeah, and then typically in the spring with load limits, I think we limit the two miles to the east, if I'm correct, and everything has to come in on that one mile going to the west over to 125. And I think we kind of work with them and let them know that, you know, so we don't restrict them completely during load limits, so...
Is there, do we have sign, signage that can, about Jake breaking?
So, so that, so that's another thing that, so that's another discussion. In order to put signs up like that, we would have to do an ordinance that would allow us to. Done some research on that, and I am just not, there's, I can't find anybody that's putting no engine braking signs in rural areas. Typically, these are reserved for more of a residential municipality. You know, so the ones that I, even, even within or near municipalities, they're having a hard time enforcing them. I mean, yeah, the sign is up, the ord, they have the ordinance, but trying to catch, get, get law enforcement there, you know, and then, and then if you're, you know, it's, if it's a noise nuisance, you know, well, how loud of a noise can it be before it's a nuisance? You know, so there, there's a lot, a lot of different variables that, that go into if you want to do the engine braking signs.
Toby, what, is there a conditional use required if this was a rezone?
Yes.
So they'd still have to go through that process and then we could put conditions on the use itself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, question for Toby. Toby, back in 2012 when this property was rezoned, were there stipulations placed on that property at that time?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Aaron's, you raised some good points, and I'm still looking at, if we were to say no today, we haven't solved anything. We apparently have, we still have these problems, and there's no incentive for Mr. Decker to do anything. I mean, why should he? I mean, he, he, he doesn't have the, what he wanted to do for a warehouse. So, did he should have, will he have to turn the lights down, will he have to do anything? And I'm still thinking, okay, no, you don't have to do a darn thing, you're business as usual. So we got the same complaints about the same situation that we have. But there is a potential here that if we were to put stipulations on these things, where many of these things would have to show progress, whether it's a fence, whether it's lighting termination, whether it's trees, whether it's, you're working with the independents to tell them to learn how to use a regular brake rather than to slam on the downshifting. We might have some, we might have some improvement in a, in an area. And we know you're not going to grow any further than what you have, because that would be a stipulation that you'd put on there. So, Commissioner Aaron's, are you looking at getting more information or are you wanting to do something today?
I'm going to propose a motion to table, and I want Mr. Decker to think long and hard and work with the neighbors on a plan, given everything that was discussed today, about whether or not he can mitigate these concerns or not. Maybe he can come back to us after the, he has satisfied some of those concerns with the community. I will tell the community this, you're not going to get away with... The status quo is changing in Lincoln County. It is. I think Norm Solom said it best, what does the future look like? By all rights, this should have never been put out there. No offense to you, Mr. Decker, you're just trying to do business. We should have created an industrial park. We still need to create an industrial park in this county where we can do these things, where nobody should, where the community does not have leverage to come in and dictate every little instance that a business is going to do. But in my estimation, when a business gets a spot zone out in the middle of ag country, you've subjected yourself to this. You have really asked for, to be micromanaged. And I would, and I don't want government to be that way. But you know what? We got to balance the rights of the neighbors with the rights of the landowner, which is you. And that balancing act unfortunately requires these things. So I'm going to do a motion to table, and hopefully Mr. Decker is going to come up with a gee whiz bang plan that's going to sat, hopefully, not completely, but satisfy the neighbors out there. And then that way, it's a community-driven decision instead of a government-driven decision.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Commissioner, I will second that with the idea that, how long do we want to table this so it doesn't drag on forever? So what's our second commission meeting in January?
January 11th.
11th? It's the spirit of Christmas. Maybe we can get something done. So let's put this on the agenda till the 11th, would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Is that, is the timing work for that? Are we having another public hearing?
I think we need to have a public hearing because if Mr., if the plan doesn't go according to the way that I conceptually thought it would, the public needs to be able to stand up and say...
My question is for staff. Does that give us enough time to advertise for another public hearing?
No.
That's my point. I mean, these conditional use things, gentlemen, those are conditional use things that you want, and, and he can bring us that plan, and we can put those conditions on it. I don't know why we're holding this gentleman up if, what's going to change in a week or two weeks? He's been here, he's explained his plan. I think we should move forward with a vote, that's my thoughts. But there is a motion and a second to table, so... And then we'll have to schedule it for another public hearing, which would be when?
25th.
The 25th.
25th of January, right, okay.
So, is that the motion then?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No.
So, sir, the motion is tabled, and we'll have another public hearing on the 25th. And hopefully you can work with the neighbors and maybe alleviate some of their concerns in the meantime, or give them some assurances of that. Thank you. We'll move on to our second reading and public hearing.
This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota. Rezoning the property legally described as Lot 4 Hoffman's addition, southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, section 31 Township 100 North, right 50 West from the A1 agricultural district to the I1 light industrial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Location is parcel ID 15031J004.
Good morning again. This is an application from Double H Land Company LLC. As you can see, this property is approximately 1,300 feet to the south of the corporate limits of the city of T. Parcel size is approximately 2.27 acres in size. The applicant did submit a concept plan with the application that identified that the property would be utilized for concrete asphalt recycling facility on the subject property. The staff report identifies that staff finds that this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is consistent with the, like, zoning of adjacent properties to the, to the east and to the south. As well as, I did get correspondence from the city of T just last week. Staff stated that, again, as, as I point out in the staff report, is that the comprehensive plan for the city of T identifies this property as future regional commercial. However, this is an application to change the zone to light industrial. But staff felt that, or city staff felt that this application and the adjacent, and the zoning of, the application for the zoning to light industrial would be consistent with what's going out in the area. They did also point out, though, in, in the correspondence, that, that, again, municipalities are always concerned with expansion, a growth that's not part of the city's infrastructure expansion plans. And so there is no infrastructure expansion plans. However, the applicant has not identified any structures that would be built on the property and using any city infrastructure. It would be primarily, again, utilized for outdoor storage of recycling materials, asphalt, and concrete type materials. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this and did recommend approval of it unanimously, six to zero. With that, I'd have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
Toby, the city of T, do they have any jurisdiction on this area?
Yeah, yeah, so, so two parts to that is, so our comprehensive plan identifies this parcel as future urban expansion, which then we don't designate residential, commercial, or industrial. So we look to their comprehensive plan for guidance on that. Again, as I mentioned, it's regional commercial. However, the city of T has subdivision authority over this, so any development on the property would go through their, their development plan review and approval. Their city actually approves all development plans with the planning commission and the city council. So yes, they will be responsible for site development of this property.
Anyone else have questions for staff?
Toby, how much stuff are they going to plan to put there? Is there any limit on this? I mean, if we're going to start storing crushed concrete and asphalt, I mean, is there site plan? Or are they going to dump a big pile? I mean, what, what kind of...
It's already there.
Yeah, it's, it's already there, right? I mean, I went by there the other day, I mean, it's... But I mean, how much more, I mean, are there, are they, once this is done, are we going to double the size? I mean, I know it's there, but...
So, like the previous application, this is step one, is they have to obtain the correct zoning for the parcel. And then they will have to obtain a conditional use permit. So as the planning commission pointed out is, yes, this property is consistent with the comprehensive plan. However, there's going to be an application review and approval that'll go through a conditional use permit process. And by state statute, you cannot attach conditions to a rezone application.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for staff?
All these red ones here, though, are those existing houses now? No, what are those?
No, that'd be the, this, this parcel here, this parcel here has been updated. This is actually, you rezoned this to light industrial this year. This parcel, there is a residence on it, and this parcel, there is a residence.
Okay, all right. I got you. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Good morning.
Sitting under a fan, I'm cold. Jeez. Can you get some heat for Commissioner Gibbon here if you're talking?
Good morning, my name's Chris Heavy. I'm a member of Double H Land Company and the president of Double H Paving that rents the ground. Double H Paving is a seasonal heavy highway contractor specializing in asphalt paving, gravel-based placement, selective demolition, minor grading. We work in a 90-mile radius of Sioux Falls. We started our business in 2003 and moved it to its current location in 2006. I know it's very important for me to talk to my neighbors. I have talked to most of them. And I want to point out that there's a neighbor to the south, Mr. Denai, I believe, if I'm saying his name right. I have not spoken to him. At the meeting on November 15th, he basically stereotyped myself and my employees as thieves. I don't take those type accusations lightly. I don't think anybody in this room would appreciate that. It was very unwarranted. It upset me, I'm still upset. I don't handle myself in the best ways, so I have, I have refrained from talking to him. I've, I've talked to my legal counsel. He certainly will be invited if this property gets rezoned. We are working on a conditional use permit. He certainly will be invited to that presentation, and hopefully we can speak and, and work some things out. Next, Betty Otten spoke at the same meeting, representing some people that could not be there, they're out of town or snowbirds, I'm not exactly sure. I talked to her last week and invited her to my office to look at a couple of things. She couldn't make it because of the holidays, I spoke to her yesterday. I asked her to please, or I guess I asked her last week if she could identify the people she was representing. She, she didn't, she respectfully declined, and that's, that's fine, because I wanted to contact them. So I, I had, there, those are the two people, or there may be several that I haven't spoken with. All the other neighbors that I have spoken with, I have had no resistance on the rezoning as far as, and I have made, made my plans known to them that there, I, I'm going to try to get a conditional use permit after this, you know, and there, there are some concerns, and we're working on those concerns. I guess I want the first step to take place before, there's a lot of time that's put in towards a conditional use permit. I don't want to waste a lot of time here, but I think there's some things that need to be addressed from the, the, the meeting in November 15th. One of the concerns was our general operating hours. Our general hours are seven to seven, Monday through Friday, with some Saturday work. In some cases, we do have to start early. Many factors contribute to our hours, such as delivery of product, the weather, and project specifications. For instance, we receive tack oil from a company in Sioux City. They determine the delivery times to our shop, sometimes as early as 5:30 in the morning, sometimes as late as 8:00 PM. This is a product we need to complete our work within specification and are basically at, you know, at their mercy. Also, as the city of Sioux Falls metro area grows, night work is being required on project specifications more and more. The work generally calls for starting after the night commute and finishing prior to the next morning's commute. An example, you guys will be very familiar with this Highway 106 from I-29 west to 469th. We were a subcontractor on that. More than once, we were not allowed to start, whether we were doing some traffic diversion work or putting some permanent surfacing down, we weren't allowed to start till after that night commute, 6 o'clock. And I know for a fact, because my son works for me, he lives with me, there's days he wouldn't get home till 10:30. You know, and those are, those are project specifications. So when I'm in a meeting, a pre-construction meeting or whatnot, I generally say our hours are seven to seven. But there are certain conditions that happen that are specific to jobs that are out of our control. Finally, we're only, we're in a seventh month construction season here with the weather. Towards the end of fall, the weather dictates our Saturday work and how late we work there at night. These exam, these examples have been standard protocol for our construction business since startup and since moving. Next, we were wrong on the, the night of the 15th of November. Somebody accused us of filling a drainage ditch on the parcel to the east in the one, the one that, you know, east of the parcel, it's up for rezoning. I do have a video of that drainage ditch, if anybody cares to see that. I think it's labeled drainage, Toby. Here again, when we rezoned this piece of property, the city of T required a drainage study, a topographic study, and a site plan. Here I am walking on the property of the, of the drainage ditch that we filled in, which I just, as you can see, walked down probably three to four feet. This was part of our site plan, that drainage ditch, that the city of T approved. I have the topographic survey, the drainage plan, and this site plan available if anybody'd like to see it. The lot was built in accordance with their approved plan. Another concern that... Another, uh, concern that night was, uh, on the 15th of November, was the truck traffic. When we bought this land in 2017, there was an existing approach on the north end of it. I went to Alan Ripentrop, who is a supervisor for Delapre Township, asked him if we could act, use trucks to access onto the township road, or build that approach bigger, and build another approach to the south. I asked permission to use that, the township road. He granted me permission to build the approach bigger and to construct a new approach. Um, I have an email from Alan Ripentrop, and I'd like to read it, or put it, uh, I'll just read it here, if you guys want a copy of it. It says, "To whom I ma-, to whom I may concern, I own the property in Verhe addition, directly south of Double H Paving's office, and the farmland on the west side of 470th Avenue, directly west of the property in question today. I have no issue with the rezoning of their property in question. I am also a township supervisor for Delapre Township in Lincoln County, South Dakota. Double H Paving is one of several businesses that uses 470th Avenue as a truck route. They asked the township permission prior to using 470th Avenue, and we certainly do not think they are responsible for the condition of the road. I have not received any complaints about Double H Paving Company's trucks on 470th Avenue, respectively submitted, Alan." Um, I will say, there have been two projects that were built in 2021, the first being 106 from I-29 West to 469th, the next being First Street, uh, in the City of T, from 470th West to 469th. We were subcontractors on both jobs. We hauled 26,000 tons of material total to both jobs. That's 1,450 dump truck loads. Um, a lot of material was hauled down, hauled down 470th Avenue, passed the property in question today, due to safety concerns and the overall access to the work areas. Now, that does include the pipe bedding material, the concrete ready mix, means, so there's been extra traffic on that township road this year. Finally, a neighbor, uh, brought up snow hauling, um, during the middle of the night. This has happened from time to time in our 15 years at the site. This is something we try to avoid at all costs, 'cause we cannot recoup the cost to haul the snow, basically an extra hour around. Um, we have two different dump sites in town. If it's early in the fall or late in the spring, they become too soft, we can't haul the material in, the snow in there. Um, or the site actually will get full, or they'll have an employee not show up to dose of, dose the same, the snow, and that's our last, our last place to go is out to our shop. We'd, we try not to do it. That's what I...
Thank you. Does any, but any of the board have questions for Mr. Heavy? If not, you can have a seat, sir. And anyone who would wish to speak in favor of the application for rezone, come up? And if there's no one, then I'll take opposition. Just come up to the podium, please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Drew Denai, uh, 27290 470th Avenue. Um, I guess first, I'll apologize for accusing him of being a thief. I don't recall it going down like that. I was just remembering that, uh, there has been an increase in thefts in the area. My next-door neighbor, Kelly, who's on, on the map there, he's been robbed twice, but I apologize, I'm not, certainly not accusing him of being a thief. Um, you guys have all heard my arguments many times. I've been fighting this for a while. Um, this, you got an industrial operation that's within 500 feet of my house. I know the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan specifically says that that shouldn't be the case. Uh, it doesn't give specifics on the distance, but I would assume 500 feet would fall within that buffer zone, that you shouldn't be grinding concrete and running bulldozers within 500 feet of my kid's bedroom. Um, I saw on his video, and it was another point of mine, they have some pretty serious heavy-duty floodlights mounted on, I don't know, 25, 30-foot poles. They, they illuminate my property and quite, quite a zone all around. That's a nuisance. Um, certainly, his trucks aren't the only ones, but I watched for several days in a row, his, his concrete trucks were rolling by every five minutes and dumping concrete on that lot. Uh, this summer, I went to work at about 6:00 in the morning, and they were already, had already been out there grinding concrete and crushing it for quite some time. That was before 6:00 AM. Uh, just wanted to make that known, you know, and then there's the whole environmental and health issue. It's, it's concrete dust, it's carcinogenic, it's a detriment to our environment, to my, to my health. Um, it, it covered my property this spring quite heavily. Um, I don't know, this, this whole thing has been extremely frustrating. These guys were operating out of compliance, basically illegally. Uh, the last meeting that we were at, uh, the commissioners all listed about a dozen reasons why they shouldn't allow this to happen, and then proceeded to do so, just because you wanted it rezoned. You, you all agreed that the, the company was not operating in, in the best environment or with the intentions there by not following laws, but you still wanted it rezoned 'cause it fits the comprehensive plan. You don't agree with their business, but you agree with the zoning. I don't understand that, especially being that it's supposed to be a commercial area and not an industrial area. Um, it's, it's been a significant detriment to my family. That's, that's what I'll close with.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir.
Uh, good morning. Uh, Jerome Miller, 46989 273rd Street. I own the property to the southwest of the, of the intersection of, uh, County Road 110 and 470th Avenue. Um, I've never met Mr. Heavy before. Um, I'm outside that magic 500-foot mark, so, um, I, I wanna start this by saying I have absolutely no axe to grind with H&amp;H Paving. Um, I've known the Hanson's for years, uh, don't, I've never met Mr., Mr. Heavy. Uh, I applaud them for their business. They've started something from nothing, and they've grown it into a pretty good-sized business, and I would only presume it's gonna continue to grow, which would be my concern. It's nothing against H&amp;H Paving, um, they don't bother me in the least until they started the concrete grinding business. Um, probably the dirtiest, noisiest process known, uh, to man. Um, and it's now within less than a half a block of a residential house that was there before they started that business. When they ran, when they started that project, or their shop, where it is down on that, where the red, uh, those red cells are at, um, I don't think any of that, any of that ever bothered anybody. Um, the concrete grinding is a, a real detriment. When we were here just a month ago, five weeks ago, on the rezoning of the other Huffman Edition there, right on the corner, and we turned that down, you folks turned that down, um, two things come to mind, and it was, I think Mr. Schmidt made the comment, but anyway, about how decisions were made years ago because they really weren't too concerned about this, and the growth just took off, and now you're painted into a corner. Um, we're at one of those corners right now, and, uh, the decision you make today is gonna make a big difference on the commission down the road. Now, you may not have to deal with it, but somebody's gonna have to. And the other thing, um, Mr. Arons did say, that I remember him saying, was that, uh, he didn't think that it was time to change that from ag one to, uh, commercial. He says, "Maybe in five or six years, maybe seven years it would be," but he says it is changing, and I agree, it is changing. However, there's a big difference between, I mean, if it wasn't gonna change for this little plot of land here, and then you jump to the concrete crushing. Uh, I in no way want to stifle H&amp;H, but that is not the location for that particular thing, for that, uh, that particular operation. That's, that's my concern. So we're at a crossroads. Let's hope out the next commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Betty Otten, 46787 273rd Street in T. I actually was not going to speak today, but the thing that, um, really, um, you need to realize, and it will probably go on the CUP, is that even on planning and zoning, I brought that up, that, um, his app, the applicant is proposing to recycle concrete, um, asphalt rubble. Um, as I reminded Toby, um, Lincoln County has no such regulations for either, um, ag or light industrial to crush concrete. There's not a regulation anywhere in Lincoln County that will allow that, and yet it's being done, and why is that? Because concrete is a carcinogen, and I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna come up and speak in opposition? If not, uh, any questions for staff or discussion amongst commissioners?
Toby, uh, there was, I guess, an insinuation or an allegation made that, uh, about illegal or impermissible conduct going on, on the site. Can you speak to that issue?
Yes, there was a complaint alleged, and staff investigated and determined that the use was not allowed in the A1 district. And so the applicant did submit an application to change the zoning of it.
What was the use that wasn't allowed? The concrete crushing?
Correct.
How long had they been in business, engaged in the unpermitted or impermissible conduct before applying for the permit?
Um, they purchased the property in 2017, I believe, and we didn't receive a complaint alleged until earlier this year.
And Toby, just as, I know we're here on the rezone, but in the way of the silica dust, you know, from the concrete, what, uh, what's the remediation or mediation of that, if any, if we were looking at a conditional use?
Um, I don't think staff's really dug into that yet at this point in time. First up, again, is the rezone part of this, to utilize a property for any use that's allowed in the I-1 district.
Thank you.
Correct.
Other questions from the commission? If not, uh, consider a motion.
Would the conditional use permit come back to us, or to the City of T?
It would, it would be heard by the, like, County Planning Commission, it is, is appealable to you. The City of T would not act on that conditional use, no.
Madam Chair, I got a question. You say your house is 500 feet from, from this thing, and you've been covered with, uh,
Again, we're here on the rezone, not the, not a conditional use request.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve, given that we are looking at a rezone, and when we look at this parcel, what is its best use in the future? And today is, uh, not in its current form. I would move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second for discussion? Any further discussion? I, for one, agree. I don't think this is the time to address those issues. This is a rezone. Everything around it is either commercial or light industrial, um, other than the couple houses, uh, Mr. Denai here, um, and his home, and I certainly feel for him, but this is already happening. I think, um, the landowner is going about it the right way now to get it rezoned, have conditions applied to him in a conditional use. Um, so I think he's trying to, uh, make things right, and, uh, so I, I'm supporting this rezone request.
Madam Chair, call the question.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Arons?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landy?
So the rezone request fails? We'll move on to item four on our agenda, Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation.
Good morning. Uh, I'm Brandon Lane. I'm the executive director for the Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation, the Harrisburg Chamber of Commerce. Also present with me is Adrian McEwen, our chair of our Board of Directors, Adam Walsh, our vice chair, and, uh, Andrew Petrus, our city administrator. So we, uh, provided some item briefing and program of work. Um, I just wanted to come in here and share with you guys a little more detail regarding the process and how critical each phase was to orchestrate our organization to its present form. So we started this process, um, earlier this year in January by partnering with the National Community Development Services with Tom DiFiore and Al Diovi to conduct a feasibility study for Harrisburg community. The feasibility study focused on four major components, when interviewing over 55 interviewees, um, ranging anywhere from employees to business owners, um, and executives. The four major components consisted were effective public-private partnership, appropriate time horizons, organizational capacity, and accountability for measurable goals and outcomes. The conclusions, the results, the results were very overwhelming. Um, there was an enthusiastic agreement that Harrisburg needs a new, more intentional approach to community and development, and it needs it now. Um, Harrisburg must invest in job creation with industrial, commercial development, marketing, which would be the attraction aspect of selling our community, and continued workforce efforts to support a tax base that provides enhancements to our community. The proposed plan received positive endorsement, but additional refinement would be needed regarding our program details and organizational structure. So the community was eager and willing. Um, so it was evident for our organization to move forward with NCDS, which we contracted in July. So August and October, um, our focus was, we hosted community dialogues and business sector discussions. And our community dialogues, we conducted over 15 community dialogue sessions ranging in multiple dates, times, to provide that opportunity for the public to attend, to provide that feedback. We used city, chamber websites, social media outlets, email lists, digital boards, road signage to inform the community. As all of the dialogues were unique, there were some common themes. Uh, communication and transparency, and the lack thereof, uh, with our organization, uh, whether it be the city, the school, the county. Um, undesirable development, the focus on zoning building in near the city to accommodate manageable growth with targeted locations for residential and business retail areas. Uh, the campaign is a game changer, as far as communication success and promoting accountability is concerned, but our behaviors must match intent going forward with the strategic plan. So after we provided the opportunity to have the residents in the community of Harrisburg come in, um, and give us feedback, whether it was positive or indifferent, um, we then wanted to really segment our way down, um, into the business sector. And so our first, um, business sector discussion consisted of the City of Harrisburg staff and officials, uh, the Harrisburg Superintendent and the Board President, and then the Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation to align commonalities for future planning, so we all could be on the same page moving forward. We also went into healthcare industries, financial institutions, developers, and then obviously utility companies. And these me- institutions, developers, and then obviously utility companies. And these meetings were powerful. It was imperative on revising and finalizing our program of work to ensure future success between all sectors. The plan is to align in such a way as best to serve the long-term needs of the Harrisburg community. So after that, we moved into November, and we focused in on the economic development and the Chamber of Commerce resolutions for our new organizational structure, which was approved by city council. We also approved our campaign branding, Heart of Harrisburg. December, we finalized our Heart of Harrisburg program of work, which was approved by city council a couple weeks ago. So moving into the new year in January, we will implement our program of work. We will continue to revise our economic development organizational structure and campaign cabinet appointments. And next month, we should also have a economic impact assessment, which really dissects the numbers from our program of work, which will jump into job creation, new income, new output, disposable income, savings, deposit potentials, and tax revenues for the county, city, and school districts. So once those are available and approved and finalized, we'll be more than happy to give you guys that information as well that you guys can look at. So please feel free to give us a call or reach out to any one of us with questions moving forward. If you'd like copies of some of the different copies of work described above, I'd be more than happy to give you guys those copies as well. And again, we just thank you for your time and coming in this morning to get you guys updated, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you guys, too, in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Thank you.
You bet.
Great job.
Move on to item five on our agenda. Terry, are you going to handle that? I already gave you. All right, we are going to skip over item five and move on to Ms. Sweeter. Good morning, Wendy.
This is the memorandum of understanding between SDSU extension and the counties that have a county paid employee. So this is the same MOU that was signed last year. It just has to be done annually.
Move to approve. The chairman to sign.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Upstein.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Move on to item seven on our agenda, consulting contract for an expert witness. Mr. Golden, is he?
Terry, go back.
All right. Well, I guess we'll go back up to item five. No, excuse me. Yeah, item five, big grant application.
So we're looking for approval and authorize the chair to execute agreement with the DOT for a bridge improvement grant, build grant for the Lake Alvin structure, 42-148-050. Again, I guess we'll be applying, deadline on that is January 2 of '22. We'll be looking at building this in '23. So cost estimates at this time are just under 1.1 million. We're, we're doing a 20% cost share on that. So I would think, you know, we would surely be covered for 250 for BR share roughly, so.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody have any questions for staff?
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to skip over item seven and move on to the replacement warrant, warrant application.
We received the application from Austin. He misplaced the check. We have the check in hand, so it's just a matter of rewriting it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. County association dues, Sherry.
So I just wanted to, I need to have the authorization for the chair to sign it. Just wanted to also point out that the dues are going up by about $3,000. This is basically just a formality for me to let you know that they increased it due to the census. So I just need your approval to, for you to sign it.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Sherry, while you're up there, we can do items 10 and 11.
I was hoping so. All right. So the next one is for the agreement for the per diem for the juvenile detention center. You'll see that it's a 5.2% increase from last year. But I do think I put a 6% increase in the budget for the cost, because it seems like it's been going up at least that amount every year, so.
All right, heard the request. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll offer the second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Sherry, did, did I read in this correctly? This is just for many Haha students that go to Sioux Falls School District?
No, that's just part of it. This is juvenile detention rates, but the outsourced, the evening report.
Isn't there some reference to that in the reading that I thought, so?
Yep. The Evening Report Center is only available to Lincoln County Sioux Falls students.
Any further discussion?
What you got to look at is the cost of that, and that is because of juvenile.
Because the evening services is what's costing us more now, correct? And that what they've?
No. The overall increase is 5.2% for the per day rate.
Yep.
So that, just as part of the cost, is 2385 per day for the Evening Report Center, which the Sioux Falls students are able to utilize. But it's an overall cost increase. So it was 230 something last year.
Yep. And now it's 257.
But that 257, yeah, that includes the cost.
It's costly to send your kids, our juvenile, because you've got so many rules and regulations that you got to comply with.
Any other questions? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. You've got some contingency transfers?
I do. So with the budget process for '21, we off, we had $300,000 set aside for contingency transfers. That is just to basically clean up the accounts as they come to the year end with shortfalls. I can go through each count. So the first one we have is the elections. We're short by 1,037.35 due to the highway and postage that was not taken into consideration when we did the budget supplement hearings. The next one is judicial. It looks like there are 2607.46 over. I would have to imagine increased court cases. The state's attorney, there, there was some problems what we had with the budget. They didn't include one employee, and when their budget was put in place, so it caused a shortfall in the wages. And the way the, the way the wages were calculated in the last budget was incorrect. So the wages ended up with a major shortfall in the state's attorney's office. That's why they need such a big supplement that, and they do have increased professional fees, I'm imagining, again, because of the cases that they've got going on. Veteran service office, we didn't have the assistant budget for insurance. We had the liability audit came in a little bit higher. We tried to rectify that with the next year budget by increasing that line item, but then human resources, same thing, the assistant wasn't accounted for. Coroner, we did have increased costs there, over by about 18,336.94. We did have claims from the Lennox ambulance. We had the coroner check into them. They were for about $4,000. But the other $14,000, there must be just an increase in autopsies. I can track down further, or I can contact Kenneth Snell to see if he knows what the reason for the budget going over so far. Supported poor, we had a couple big hospital claims that we put through. Urban development, we didn't count for, we're still doing a Delaware Township project when we did Dendol. We have to do a permitting every year. That was not accounted for in the 2021 budget. Industrial development, we overpaid the professional fees to, it is, to Sioux Falls Economic Development, I think it's called. We overpaid them by $200 prior, because after what you guys put $8,700 in there for the budget, they sent a bill for $8,900, and no one caught it. Debt services on both of them, the principal was under budgeted for on the courthouse building, and the interest was under budgeted for on the highway building. Total of the requests that I'm asking for is 177,840.
We budgeted 300,000?
Yep.
So we came in.
Thank you. Heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
There is a offer, I believe, in our budget to the Triage Center, and it was a request for those funds that were asked for by the Triage Center in Sioux.
I don't believe that they were.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. We'll circle back to Mr. Golden.
There is a request for an expert witness in a habeas case that is from State V Patterson. It was a homicide case involving a three-year-old here several years ago. The attorney general's office had come down and given assistance in trying that matter. It was tried. There was a successful case, and it was a conviction. They're now in the habeas proceedings. And one of the issues in the case was that the defense was that the child had choked on a gummy bear. And so there was a lot of medical records and other things, whereas the state was contending that there was a physical assault that resulted in the death. There at the state in the habeas at this point in time, that the AG's office is actually handling the habeas proceedings, and that they need to hire an expert witness, a physician, in order to combat the proceedings in the habeas. So the contract is for a cap of $20,000 for that expert, and so we're here asking for the commission to sign the contract and authorize the funds.
Thank you. We've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. Move this thing along.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries.
Two items left. I think we kind of already covered 13, so I'm just going to take that one up quickly. Sherry, does that, do you know if that works on Mr. Grimmon's schedule to come in on January 4? And then can we let the courtroom advisory committee know that so they can attend if they'd like to? Thank you. And then we'll go back to item 12. Julia.
Good morning.
Morning.
For final approval, I put some numbers in front of you in the briefing form for the elected officials to set those final salaries for 2022. And then I also provided some rationale on how you arrived at those numbers as well.
Madam Chair, did we vote on these ones before?
We voted on them as part of our budget.
Okay.
I'd ask for a motion.
These items were voted on, and they were part, part of the budget, and it passed, right?
Correct.
So we're doing it again?
Correct.
Okay.
This was tabled at the last meeting. I don't, I think maybe you were not present at that meeting.
Madam Chair, it was a meeting, or two meetings ago, actually, it was tabled from. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Poppins, what was that?
This was brought before us two meetings ago. Commissioner Schmidt was unavailable, I believe. I don't remember if we tabled it, or if we, it just didn't pass. It was a 2-2 vote, wasn't it?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
So with that, I'd ask for a motion.
Well, obviously, what, we have a problem here. I mean, if we voted on it, it's for the budget. Are we on the opposition? Are you concerned about what? I mean, I don't see anything wrong with this with the, I saw a sign the other day, or just yesterday, in fact, that the average starting pay is now approaching 20 bucks an hour. And I look at the professionalism that we have to have on here, and these are in market range, Julia? Are they market? Are we undermarket? We overmarket? What, where's the market?
It depends on the position, but overarching, this would bring the individuals to market.
Right at market, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And when you say in market, are you saying counties with the same population as us? Or what, what are we saying?
So back in the previous compensation study, the commission voted to have 13 comparable counties be market. So that's what market consists of.
And the cost of living is going up how much this year?
Right now, as of the end of November, it was at 6.7, I believe.
Percent?
Correct.
In our market area, we, we compare the tri-state area, not just South Dakota?
Correct. And I stand corrected, it was 7.3 for cost of living as of end of last year.
How much of a cost of living adjustment do we have in the numbers in front of us?
Depends on the position.
Could you go down the list?
Sure. State's attorney, 2.5. Sheriff's office, 3.57. Auditor's office, 18.48. Treasurer's position is 15.76. Register of deeds is 14.24, and then the commissioners are 2.54.
So it's not just the cost of living. That's the cost from where it was last year to bring it up to market, correct?
For some positions, yes.
Okay. And when you say some positions, you're referring to sheriff, auditor, treasurer, registered deeds?
Correct.
So state's attorney was considered at market, and he's being brought up 2.5% as well as the commissioners?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I know we, no one wants to make a motion, but I'll make a motion to approve the salaries as listed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll offer the second for discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Phil, do we need an executive session for anything?
Phil, do we need an executive session for anything? No? Okay. Okay. What provision? So SDCL 125-2 sub 1 and potentially SDCL 125-2 sub 4?
We gonna talk about a project manager afterwards?
We're gonna save that for Mr. Grimmon's discussion.
Oh, okay. All right. You need an executive session motion?
Yes.
So our move for executive session?
I'll second it.
Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Thank you, second. Thank you, Sean.
Poppins and second by Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. We are adjourned. Sean, you have stuff for me to sign?